Meeting to order, if you'd please rise and join us for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Present this evening are myself, Mayor Marl, council members CO, Dylan Delorco, Kamara Sulek, Kraus, and Mayor Protem Girba. From city staff in council chambers this evening, we have City Manager O'Toole. Clerk Royal is actually participating remotely, excuse me. I don't believe Treasurer Bennett is here. Assistant City Manager, Community Development Director Green is with us, along with Police Chief Hart, Parks and Rec Director Scruggs. I think DPW Director Scherls will be here, and City Engineer Fordice is with us as well. At this time, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended, noting that the PUD site plan extension for Layer Farms has been removed and will likely be added to the next council agenda on August the 16th.
Moved as amended.
Moved by CO to approve as amended. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Dylan. All those in favor of approving the agenda as amended signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. There are no absences this evening, so we'll proceed to citizen comments on agenda items. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time, make comment or question on an item that appears on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. And we'll begin with those who are present in council chambers this evening. If you'd like to speak, just come to the podium, you'll have three minutes. Please.
Hi, I'm Ron Schofield. I'm one of the owners at Salt Springs Brewery in town here. Whether anybody was aware of it or not, we've been open for six years officially Saturday evening. Prior to our opening, everybody was afraid that we were going to be a big boozy hall, and there would be people swinging from chandeliers and noise across the street. Chief Hart wasn't here, but officers came in every single day in the evening, and they would poke around. What's going on? Is there something terrible going on? And after about 10 days, they finally come to understand that this was a family restaurant owned by families, and that we would not tolerate that. We had to operate within the realm of the liquor licensing, the regulations. The city grants us a license, the state grants us a license, and if we step out of line, boy, are we in trouble. Well, that's what's going to happen with your social district. Anybody that steps out of line is going to get in trouble. I listened to some comments earlier, I'm sorry I wasn't able to get here sooner. Comments were made about the three events that are going to happen in the area. Well, the Umbrella Square is the Umbrella Square. It has its own rules that function. When Summerfest and these other things kick in, they have their own rules that function. The social district is simply a means of allowing people to come into town, purchase a beverage, walk around, and enjoy the town, and they may find that they go up past hands and think, well, there's nothing there. Or they'll go over here, and, well, there might not be anything there, but at least they've wandered around town a little bit and they got a chance to see what's going on. The fears of it's going to be some, you know, beer-fueled party, I think are a little over-exaggerated. And if it does turn into that, that gentleman over there is going to show them, you know, how that doesn't happen. So that's what responsible people do. I heard a concern about if it needed to be shut down, it had to go through a public hearing. Well, that may be very well and good, but you passed the rules about how long these things are open, about where they occur. If it becomes a problem, shut it down between noon and 12:01 during the day, and you've ended whatever problem you experienced. You don't have to go through these heroic efforts to let some terrible thing, you know, continue that you can't control. You can absolutely control it because you set the boundaries for what happens. Limit it to, you know, two square feet, or limit it to one minute a day if it gets out of hand, but if it gets out of hand, again, Chief Hart is here to take care of that. That's his job. Getting people into town is really what this is about. Now, I might be skeptical that we're going to have this wealth of people come in, because I don't think they're going to come in to enjoy the social district, but what they are going to do is have an opportunity to purchase a beverage. And imagine, I was in Chelsea mid-July on one of their Thursday nights, and they have this district, and we were sitting at Common Grill right in the window, and all these people are walking by with their families, and they've got, you know, some have drinks in their hands, and I asked some questions, and they explained what's going on. I didn't see anybody running amok in the streets. Was not the case. So, thank you, Mayor, for setting that timer for me, but our biggest concern was liability. And we understand what we have to do. We over-serve anybody, whether they sit with us or they walk out the door. We're responsible, and we will keep an eye on it, and I'm sure any other business owner that participates will as well. Thank you for your time.
There are additional citizen comments on agenda items?
I wasn't going to say, but I'm Mary Hess, and my concern is that this social district to 2025, there are many things. In fact, I think employees may get reviewed again after a year. If nothing else, I would hope that this is, change is hard on a lot of people, and I know we now have the marijuana dispensaries, and that's fine, but it's like anything, we learn to walk before we run. And that's one thing I would hope that it would be if it is passed. Thank you.
Thank you. There are additional citizen comments?
Go ahead, Jones.
Okay. You all know me, I own a business in town, I grew up here, my family's been here for 100 years. I'm also the president of Celine Main Street, and I understand that it is, the social district is a bit of a confusing idea. It's brand new, and, but we don't think that this is going to be the end-all, be-all that's going to save downtown and by any stretch. We want it to be a tool in the toolbox for a reason for someone who looks online and says, oh, Celine has a social district, I've never been to Celine, I'm going to go check it out. I mean, it, like Holly said, we can't expect the Celine residents to get our businesses back up on their feet all by themselves. I just implore you to trust your experts, trust your staff. Holly went around and got signatures from every business in town. Yeah, there were a couple people who declined it, but the mass majority of businesses was in favor of it, whether they would let alcohol into their space or not. I just, I want you to try something, it's not perfect. Yeah, like we said, there's not a public space downtown where we can have a seating area, but just getting people into town in this way, I think, could help the businesses. They're in favor of it, city staff is in favor of it. I just wish that you could also just kind of have a leap of faith and give it a shot. Thank you.
Thanks, Jill. Any additional citizen comments on agenda items? Please.
Yes, my name is Bernard Miller of Celine in Philadelphia. I watched the work meeting, and all I kept thinking was, if you build it, they will come. I mean, like Ron said, this is not about a big blowout of beer. It's not like Oktoberfest. It's actually a place where people can get together, sit, and talk, and eat. I go there on a, every Saturday morning, and people are actually sitting at the table and talking to each other. I mean, you know, I just think that this is bigger than all of us. While you can't help the businesses that are failing, they have to fail. That's one of the basic tenets of capitalism. But I do think that hopefully, out of the ashes, a greater phoenix will arise, and I hope that you look with some vision and some creativity and place a space where people can actually get together and sit and talk. It's more than just about alcohol. The workout, the workaround about the alcohol laws are all doable. They are just little frangibles that need to be addressed, and that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Thank you. Any additional citizen comments on agenda items? Please.
Damian Farrell with High Meadow Development. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, fellow city council members, City Manager O'Toole. I have a document which I'd like you to take into your closed session meeting today. It's an updated document of all the agreements that we already have in place for this project. I also printed out an updated schedule, and fortunately, on my rush, the office left it on my desk. May I email that to you right now?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. But I would, I just want to stress, we are shovel-ready, we remain shovel-ready. We have been that way for several months now. From a financing point of view, it's all in place. I have the largest owner-operator of residential property in this county and probably many others as my financial partner on this project, along with their management expertise as well. And we have all of our major, all our major contracts in place, signed, and ready to release. We literally are. Do I hand these to you?
Please. Yep. She'll make sure to distribute them to the rest of council. Thank you, Mr. Farrell. There any additional citizen comments on agenda items? The record will reflect there are none in the dais this evening, or in the chamber, rather. Clerk Royal, did we receive any communiques in advance of tonight's meeting via email?
We did. I have one from Mr. Mark Smith. It says, Dear council members and Mayor Marl, thank you for your service to our city. I want to express my opposition to the proposed social district. One of the most cherished characteristics of our city is that Celine is a great place to raise a family. Given the fact that the downtown area is a very popular place for families to spend time in and pass through, it is not appropriate to allow and encourage free movement in that area by people who are consuming alcoholic beverages. Doing so will effectively turn downtown into an adults-only zone. Please say no to this proposal. Thank you for your thoughtful consideration.
Very good. Thank you to the gentleman who submitted his comments. Are there any additional comments or questions, concerns that were provided in writing, Clerk I'll take that as a no.
No.
Thank you all for your comments. We'll proceed now to the consent agenda. The following consent agenda will normally be adopted without discussion, however, at the request of any citizen or council member, any item may be removed from the consent agenda for council discussion.
Moved as submitted.
Moved by CO to approve as submitted. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Kamara Sulek. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda as submitted signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We moved unfinished business item 21-118. This is downtown social district, and just for the public's edification, we've discussed this issue on numerous occasions, and we did have a work meeting this evening in which we addressed questions and concerns and stated, many colleagues, many of my colleagues, excuse me, stated their position on this matter. So the discussion may be brief, just wanted to preface by saying that. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the updated information from the Celine Main Street, Celine Main Street Director Andrews, and to approve or not to approve creating a social district per the Celine Main Street request.
I move to acknowledge.
Okay, we'll start with a motion to acknowledge by Kraus. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Kamara Sulek. City Manager O'Toole, again, for the public's benefit, is there anything that you'd like to add?
No additional comments this time, just that council is looking for, or staff is looking for direction from council, and we stand ready to enact whatever policy decision you determine.
Okay, very good. Any additional questions for staff? Questions? Yes, Mr. CO, you had your hand up first.
Yes, Ms. O'Toole, can you explain to me that if this resolution is passed, how do we intend to mark the boundaries of the social district?
So, the city would be required to purchase signage and place signage at the boundaries of the social district to indicate where the district begins and ends. There have been some creative ideas discussed as well, such as possibly painting along the sidewalk, the areas where the commons areas exist, but it would entail us purchasing and installing some additional signage.
Any idea what the cost of that might be?
I don't, I don't have that cost. Off the top of my head, it really would need to look at the number of signs we need. Conservatively, probably a budget of $4,000 to $5,000 for signage.
Okay, thank you.
Additional questions? Councilmember Dylan?
Thank you. For Ms. O'Toole, you had mentioned in the work meeting that we're unsure of what that threshold would be to discontinue the social district. Do we know, are there any social districts that have been discontinued?
None of which I'm currently aware.
Okay.
So, I don't, I don't want to misspeak or misstate what it would take, or underscore what it would take to make those changes. Regarding the public comment on substantially altering the operations of the district to the point that it was no longer functional, my only concern there would be that by making the district functionally obsolete, we expose ourselves to liability from the businesses because we didn't follow the due diligence necessary within the legislation to actually terminate the district. But, but again, there's not much of a precedent to go on for what that would take.
Okay. And there was a question that I apologize that I didn't ask, because I realized that as Mr. Schofield was speaking, so if Umbrella Square is in existence on South Ann Arbor Street, how do we connect Salt? Because wouldn't they need South Ann Arbor Street to be a part of it? And how would they cross through Umbrella Square?
So, the northeast side of the sidewalk, am I getting those directions right? It is included in the district.
But it couldn't pass through?
So, the issue that we've seen and heard from the Michigan Control Commission is, they didn't want to see it pass through an existing district. Technically, the district ends at the curb, the outdoor dining area ends at the curb. The problem with Leather Bucket Alley and Smokehouse 52 is that they have their outdoor dining in the alley, and their service is through that, so they would have to physically pass through the district, whereas no one has to physically pass through the social district on the northeast side of the street.
Okay. So then, the alleyway next to Max is not a part of, Umbrella Square is just curb-to-curb street?
Correct.
Okay, it does not include the sidewalk?
It does not. The sidewalks are covered under the outdoor cafe permits.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much.
Any additional questions? Councilmember Kraus.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I just want to say, I, I've heard all of my colleagues' concerns, and I've been back and forth on this since we started talking about it, and I do think that we should take a leap of faith. I've, I've been to many of these this summer, and I know they're not all the same, and I know that just because it's happened wonderfully in some world, doesn't mean it could go wrong a year. I get that. We have to, our chief of police has spoken, I trust that he would, would do what he had to do to keep everybody safe. Mrs. Hess made a good comment today as well, times change. This is an artifact of a society that we are living in now, and I am concerned about the lack of end date, so I would, if it does pass, and I will be voting in support of this, I would like to be, to see some sort of a vigilante, eagle eye watching this. I live downtown, I'm downtown all the time. Not that I'm offering or volunteering to lease it whatsoever, but I'm just saying, I've, I've seen a lot of neat relationships happen since COVID with what, in fact, Bernie mentioned this as well, people coming together, and, and I would implore my colleagues to think, to try it, a leap of faith, and if you don't, I, I do understand your concern, so, but that's what I wanted to say.
Additional questions for city staff or our guests? Mr. Kamara Sulek?
Thank you. I'd like to piggyback a little bit off of Mrs. Kraus's comments, and really taking into account what the comments were made by the public. I think we're losing people that are going to other communities to enjoy their social districts, to check it out. I think we would keep some of our citizens here and other communities come to us. I'm also uncomfortable with the, with the long end date, so for clarification, Ms. O'Toole, how long does it take to, the process for a public hearing?
So, that would actually probably be a question that Clerk Royal could answer a little bit better in terms of how much time we need to prepare or post and schedule a public hearing.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
You would need to have notice in a paper, and you need to get 15 days' notice before the meeting, so any meeting you would have it on, you would need to have at least 15 days prior so that the public would be notified.
So, are we thinking around 30 days as far as with?
Yeah, high end.
Paperwork? Right, okay. So, that doesn't seem to be too much of a, of an obstacle if things, if things go sideways, but I also have taken heart, well, I really listened to what Chief Hart has said for other communities, and if it's not going well, he's gonna, he's gonna take care of it. The utmost respect for the police department and their research in this along the way, so that gives me more confidence. So, I will also be voting in the affirmative. Thank you.
Okay, I want to reserve additional discussion to the actual motion. We do just have a motion on the floor right now to acknowledge receipt. So, are there additional questions for staff or our guests from Celine Main Street? There appear to be none. We'll proceed to vote then. It's been properly moved by Kraus, seconded by Kamara Sulek to acknowledge receipt. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. The chair would be happy at this time to entertain a motion to either approve or not to approve creating a social district.
Motion to approve?
Moved by Kraus to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Kamara Sulek. Is there additional discussion on the motion? I'm sorry, Mr. Girba, please.
As I earlier stated, the reason why I'm voting no on this is because we have multiple layers of districts and liquor licenses and a number of things going on that, unlike other communities where I'm seeing this play out in terms of Chelsea, or Myland, or Dexter, they do not have the type of situation that we have set up right now. We have an area where you cannot walk into to have alcohol because those are assigned to different restaurants. We have a merchants' park, which at this point is excluded. We don't have a common area at all to have people sit down and gather to drink that isn't controlled by somebody at some point. Basically, you'll be sitting at our park benches that are somewhere within the city. I think this could work, but not when we have all these different stipulations and carve-outs and solutions. I thought this was to help our entire downtown, and I don't feel that happening at this point. There's areas that are not included in it, which have retail, and they're not, they're basically discarded because of South Ann Arbor Street, because someone doesn't want to have that coming past their restaurant. So, it's either we're all into it together, or we're not, and I think what we've got right now is fine for this purpose, and until we have a better approach in terms of including the entire downtown, I won't be supportive.
Very good, that's clear. Mr. CO, you'd like to add something?
I guess I just want to restate my position that I feel that given all the confusion that exists even on council, on this issue about what's included, what's not included, when it's going to take place, when it's not going to take place, and then how do you publicly, how do you disseminate information? One of the big difficulties, I think, right now that public entities have is trying to communicate adequately to the public what is supposed to be going on at any particular time. And when you have an issue this complex, I think it gets very difficult to explain adequately to the public, so you're not going to have people unintentionally violating the premise. So, I like Mr. Girba and tend to vote no on the issue.
Any additional comments on the motion? Mr. Kamara Sulek?
Yes, I, I'll reiterate my, my confidence in Chief Hart, and also Celine Main Street is a very well-organized group. They put on the Oktoberfest every year, and that's a lot of people, and a lot of alcohol, and a lot of moving parts. I've enjoyed being a part of that, and I'm always amazed at how well that is run. So, I think looking at Celine Main Street's track record, along with working with city staff and including Chief Hart, we can clarify this and, and make it work. It's not going to be pretty, but I don't want to be afraid of change because it just doesn't look like a, a nice shiny penny on, on the surface. I think we can, I think we can do this, and that it's incumbent upon us to do what we can for our downtown businesses, and while some have declined to participate, we have an overwhelming number that, that want to. And I know of a lot of people that would be fine walking around, drinking outside, maybe sitting on one of the benches, or just standing. It's nice to be outside, and this may be something that people will be able to do, depending upon how And this may be something that people will be able to do depending upon how the, the new variant is, is affecting us. So there's a lot of moving pieces, but I have confidence in all the players that, that this could work. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments? Then we'll proceed to vote. There's a motion on the floor moved by Kraus, seconded by Kamira Sulek to approve. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Uh, nays have it and the motion fails. Thank you. We move on to new business item 21-144, annual MML liability and property insurance pool. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the August 2nd, 2021 memo from HR Generalist Getzmann and to approve or not to approve the renewal premium of $166,986.
Move to acknowledge and to approve.
Moved by Mayor Protem Girba to acknowledge and to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Del Orco, Councilmember Del Orco. I don't believe that HR Generalist Getzmann is here. Are you taking the lead on this, City Manager O'Toole?
Yes, and we also have a representative from MML here with us today.
Yep.
Judy Thompson-Terossian, if I got that right, who, who will actually be presenting some information for you all.
You've been joining us for many years. We welcome you back.
I have, thank you.
How many years have you been with the MML liability pool?
Twenty-two.
Good for you. Floor is yours.
Thank you. Well, thank you for your long-term loyal membership to your program. The MML has two insurance programs, the liability and property pool and the workers' account fund. And the City of Celine is loyal members in both. It's a member-owned program, they both are. And this year, the premium went up about 3.7%. The reason is largely due to, we did a property appraisal for you last year and that increased your property values by over 17%. So our underwriter softened the increase because we wanted you to be fully protected, but we weren't doing it to charge you more money. We were doing it to protect you, so. That, and you will also get another dividend this year, $10,745. And that is a little bit higher than what we gave you last year, $10,562.
Very good.
Any questions?
Excellent. We'll open it up for questions, either for our guest or for city staff. Are there any questions? Mr. Girba, please.
Um, one of the things we're looking at, we have a test for identifying historical properties that we're going to be looking at. How do you handle those differently or is that something that we may be able to follow up with you at a later date? We have our historical farm or historical depot and, you know, the concerns about how do we maintain those and maintain the insurance and everything. And are they a, a higher liability for us as a city in understanding those kind of impacts? Is that something?
We have a lot of communities in the state that do have historic districts and we insure a lot. The way our policy reads is we give you replacement cost coverage. So we try to make it, and in many cases, I'll give you an example. We had a fire in one of our historic city halls in the UP several years ago. And we worked with the city to have the building look like it did before the fire. So it, it maintained that 1800s look. So we, we do work with our members. We, we want you to be happy.
Great, and that's helpful to know because we have had those concerns because I saw Canton lost their historical barn in a fire and we would be devastated if that should happen here and we weren't able to replace it. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Very good. Additional questions for our guest? Ms. Dillon.
I just wanted to say thank you for your executive overview. It really laid out where there were changes and so I really made it very comprehensive. Thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? Thank you very much, appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Appreciate your efforts. Is there any subsequent discussion on the motion? There appears to be none. It's been properly moved by Girba, seconded by Del Orco to acknowledge, to approve. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item 21-145, Claudine Court private street designation. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the July 28th, 2021 memo from Assistant City Manager Green and to approve or not to approve the Claudine Court could be developed as a private street. Is there a motion?
Move to acknowledge?
Moved by Dillon to acknowledge. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Kraus. Mr. Green, the floor is yours.
Thank you, sir. Anytime we have a new street that comes, that potentially comes within our system, whether it's a public or private street, City Council has to give it a designation. Most of the time, we leave that up to the developer with what they want to do with the street. And at the end of the day, that just pretty much determines who's going to maintain that street long-term. For Blake Anthony Homes, they wish to have this as a private street, so that means they will assume all the maintenance responsibility going forward if that's approved.
For the public's edification, can you explain where this street is?
Yep, so this will be part of the Westgate development on North Maple Street. This is the property that you guys recently rezoned to R3, so it's going to be about 47-unit development just north of the courthouse.
Very good. Are there questions for the Assistant City Manager? I'll start with Councilmember Kraus.
Thank you, Mayor. I've already emailed with Assistant City Manager Green and gave me some great answers. One thing you said, so the city would not be responsible for maintaining, of course, but the water sanitary lines are intended to be public, but that will be finalized via easements after the whole site plan is processed. So if there's a water break, we would still have to fix it. Does that continue after the easement?
Yeah, the, the easement is what gives us the right to maintain them. So the reason we do this afterwards is because normally these engineering drawings aren't done until the final site plan. So once the planning commission finalizes that, normally that's when we go through the engineering process on the back end with staff and our consultants to make sure all the lines work. So we, we started that process earlier with Blake Anthony Homes and, yeah, specific questions, Jeff has been taking the lead on that a lot, but yeah, those won't be coming before you guys for a while.
So we're on the hook to fix the breaks, but we don't get the tax revenue?
For the, for the-
We don't, we don't main, have to maintain the Act 51, I'm sorry, the Act 51.
Yeah, for the normal street, but for the lines naturally, like everything else, we'll get all the tap fees and all the normal charges for that.
Okay, that's all I wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Councilmember Dillon, did you have additional questions?
I do. Why is the city looking at this as a, as a private road versus a public road? Is it spatial?
Yeah, so a lot of this, like I said, they normally get to designate how they wish to proceed. For private streets, it gives them a little more flexibility with their layout and design. If something's a public street, we have very specific design standards we meet versus a private street, we give them a little more flexibility such as the, uh, street width can be smaller, curbs can be differently designed. So it's pretty much just the layout issue that they wish to control.
I, I just want to make it clear that I will not be voting in favor of this. I am very much in support of the project, but we repeatedly say that we do not want private streets and yet we keep approving them. And so I think we're sending a mixed message and I, I think that we need to decide as a city which avenue we're going to pursue. And so for that, I, I've decided that I will not support this. Thank you.
Remember too, we're, we're just at this point in entertaining a motion to acknowledge receipt, so I need to focus primarily on questions. Mr. Seal, did you have questions for, for Mr. Green?
I'll reserve for the next motion.
Okay, Mr. Kamira Sulek, you had questions?
I'll reserve for the next.
Okay. Any additional questions, Mr. Girba?
Just clarification. In the past, we've always required private streets to be built to city standards, even if they may have a narrower approach to that. Are we-
Yeah, they, they still meet those design standards of compaction and everything like that, it's just pretty much the size.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that. And also, this is going to be a, a development of apartments?
Technically, yeah.
Yeah, they won't be individual on residences.
Nope.
It's basically a type of development.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, it'd be similar, very similar to Cascade Point.
Mr. Del Orco, did you have questions, sir?
Uh, real quick, does this in any way sidestep zoning regulations for the, the way that they would approach building the street?
No, that, this is exactly, I was writing in the code where they have to come before council before final site plan approval. So if for some reason they, they tried to designate this as a private street, you guys say no, and that's ultimately going to probably just delay final site plan for them to redesign everything.
Okay, so they can't sneak in variances and look for ways to avoid buffer zones or anything like that?
No. Naturally, with everything in the zoning code, there's a chance to get a variance, but that most likely, if it was a private, their variance request would be dimensional versus trying to get a variance to make this private.
Okay, all right.
Any additional questions for staff? And we do have a motion on the floor moved by Dillon, seconded by Kraus to simply acknowledge receipt of the July 28th memo. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Is there a subsequent motion to approve or not to approve the Claudine Court to be developed as a private street?
Move to approve.
Moved by Mayor Protem Girba to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Kamira Sulek. Is there discussion on the motion? Mayor Protem Girba.
Um, what type of a language or whatever will be in the development agreement that says it will remain a private street?
It, it's dedicated on the site plan as a private street. So if they did some, want to come make it a public street in the future, they would have to come back and get that approval. But it's listed on the site plan right now as a private street.
And one and only other comment, and I've heard this too, if we could convince them to change it from Westgate to Northgate, I'm making that appeal at this time. Thank you.
If, if I can follow up on Mayor Protem Girba's comments, and I, I guess I'll also touch upon something that, that Councilmember Dillon raised and I suspect my colleague, Mr. Seal, will address as well. As a standard, I think we should be encouraging streets to be built to a public standards and, and dedicated to the municipality. I think there are exceptions to that and I, in my judgment, this qualifies. The, the larger concern, and this touches to Mr. Girba's point, is when we as a legislative body decide that we're going to designate a street or a road as private, I want to avoid situations that have occurred in the past where subsequent the developer or the HOA petition for us to make that change. So I just want to make clear that my approach moving forward is if there are special circumstances that make it necessary to have a private street, fine, but don't come back two, five, 10 years later and expect us to dedicate it as a, as a public road. I think that is, I think that's bad public policy and a practice that this, this body and, and subsequent bodies should avoid. Mr. Girba, do you want to add to that?
Just in, in that venue, part of the issue is the street is made much narrower, so that really disqualifies it from ever being a city street and I hope that that's what the circumstances are here.
Yeah, but based on the design and required setbacks for this lot, since it is kind of more narrow and long, it, to make it the normal design of a public street would end up reducing the complex completely.
Which could be something we could put in our ordinance or our stipulations, that requirement of a public street must meet the standards to allow parking on both sides and full width, because that is what came up with, not Woodbridge, but over up of Woodland Drive that Woodland condos developed.
Oh, Sycamore and Conwood.
And they wanted a smaller street and that made it quite clear that it would never come a city street, it has a difficulty to keep.
I think that's a perfectly reasonable standard. I, I guess my preference would just be to take it a little bit further. We've had, as you know, because you're, you're the, the, you're the, of the seven of us, you have the, the longest tenure as a council member, but there have been multiple housing developments where we were told these are going to be private roads in perpetuity and then that, that changed.
But in those situations, that circumstances, generally the streets were full-size streets.
Correct.
So it was like that situationally, how do you argue that when, when it does meet the standards of that? And of course, I've always voted no against it because I would expect the developer, developer to his word and unfortunately, that hasn't happened.
And may, and maybe that's something as a legislative body we can explore, City Manager, in the future. But, you know, again, I, I think just as a matter of public policy, if this body decides we're going to make a road private, that barring some very unusual circumstances, that should be maintained in perpetuity. There are additional comments on this motion? Mr. Seal.
I guess I agree with the idea that Ms. Dillon expresses that. I think that developing streets as private streets is poor public policy. In the future, people move into that neighborhood, they're not aware of the fact that, of why it was developed the way it was. They wonder why they have to pay for snow plowing. They wonder why they have to pay for things like street lighting and so on. It's because it's a private street. And then there's a cry, hue and cry to, you know, why we pay the same taxes, property taxes. Now, maybe it's different here because these are rental units and you might not get the same, same expression of concern as you would with a privately owned unit, but people want to know why they're not getting the same bang for their buck for their taxes as they are in any other place in town and why they're having to pay those extra things. So I think it's poor public policy and I too will be voting, you know, in the negative.
Thank you. Mr. Kamira Sulek?
Yes, thank you. I agree with Mr. Seal and Mrs. Dillon on this one. I, I think city control of streets is, is better public policy. A couple of quick questions. Does the, how much different is the street width than our city requirements?
Jeff, do you have to remember that off the top of your head?
No, I'm looking at the plan right now, trying to pull that out.
Okay, well, let me ask this next question then. For first responders, how, it, it looks like it'd be really difficult for them to turn around and they're, and narrower the street, the less accommodating it is to fire, police.
Yeah, all, all street designs are submitted to Chief Hart and to Fire Department for their review. Also with site plans, they are required to submit turning templates, so that's also reviewed by our planners and engineers to make sure a fire truck or emergency, emergency vehicle can make it to every single spot. So the, these are all reviewed beforehand.
Okay. It just doesn't look like normal streets, especially a short street, where they can, there's a circle at the end or a T to be able to back around. But my next question is the, these really narrow and long retention areas. I'm assuming that that's been approved, but it looks a little uncharacteristic and, you know, makes me question, is that, is that sufficient? And is that something that deviates from, it, from, from code?
Yeah, that, that'll be something Planning Commission reviews and ultimately approves during final site plan, but this is something that's reviewed by OHM to meet all stormwater detention standards. So OHM before final site plan will submit a formal recommendation to Planning Commission regarding that.
Okay. Doesn't the, doesn't the, the water slope down southward from there? And, and maybe so with all the parking areas from the businesses from Celine Medical Center and, and all of that.
Yeah, th, those lines are tied in there. Well, that, that's something Planning Commission will review and ultimately approve.
Okay. I'm assuming you don't have the documents in front of you, Mr. Green. I certainly don't, but I, I am keenly aware that the, the development of that lot presents some challenges from a storm, uh, stormwater management perspective that I know will be.
Due to the current agreements that are with that property.
Correct. So I know that will be addressed as part of the, the site plan process.
Okay. I, I'm not questioning the, the planning process or committee, but due to the uniqueness of that lot and how we've talked about its development prior, it just has some things that make me a little uncomfortable and I don't know if that's given Mr. Fordice enough time.
Not quite. It wasn't part of the-
Well, it's not imperative, but if that, if he could get that information later, I'd appreciate it.
Sure. I, I will say that your overall concerns about private streets, I think are, are very well-placed and, and the history that the, the mayor mentioned, you know, that's, that's significant. Those were different kind of streets. You know, this is, this is more, it's a street, it's a private street, but it's more or less an access way. It's a driveway with a name. It's, you know, it's, it's kind of like the apartment complexes off of Clark. You know, those, they're parking lots with a road through it. You know, that's, that's basically, you know, we're, we're one step above that where this is an access way to get into a development. And it's, it's not a single-family home development, it's, it's attached apartment buildings. You know, so it's, it's a different kind of feel, it's a different kind of requirement. And if we put in a full-scale city street on this lot, as, as Mike referenced, we wouldn't be able to fit these buildings here because it, it would be quite a bit wider with the parking on both sides.
Well, I'm assuming from a developer's perspective, it would be undevelopable at that point.
Very nearly, yeah, yeah. So it, I think it's a great idea to, to kind of review this stance and this policy and, and which situations we require public streets, which ones we allow public streets. This one, you know, given its, its tightness and its difficulty of maintenance, I, you know, I wouldn't want our crews spending time plowing this. And there's just, you know, the density of driveways in there, it's just a bunch of complaints waiting to happen. of driveways in there, it's just a bunch of complaints waiting to happen. So, you know, let this be private and let the developer deal with it, and this is going to be single ownership. You know, this is going to be owned by one entity and then rented to 47 individuals. So it's different than a condominium, it's different than a site condo, it's different than a single-family home.
Very good. Mr. Girba, do you have one additional thought?
Thank you, Mr. Fordyce, for that. The other thing I identify is, I'm thinking Claudine is, so they have a different address to be able to identify them, other than making it all maple road, and as a result, and it allows that to be a distinct development from that perspective. I just wanted, the other aspect is, I was going to say we would identify the streets that are, or Maple Ridge, not Maple Oaks, those are private, if I'm reading correct.
I would have to go double-check those, but I believe so as well.
Yeah, that whole, so if you look at that development, it's almost identical to what this is. Streets run around in that building, in that complex, then they're not dedicated city streets, they are private streets, because we shouldn't be paying for maintaining a special type of roadway system, and this is something that is the responsibility of that group to maintain as they might have that special need for that type of street. So I'm so in support of this, I will be voting yes for it.
Very good. Before we conclude and transition to the vote, for members of the public or members of council who are interested in this development and learning more, this will be on the Planning Commission agenda when?
The next meeting, so August 11th is when it's currently scheduled.
August 11th at 7:00 PM, if you're interested. Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. Green. Mr. Seal, one final thought before we vote?
One quick comment. Thank you, Mr. Fordyce, for explaining the difference. You've allowed me to, or you've convinced me to change my mind. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Kamira Sulak?
Yes, so just to finish up, I'm in favor of policy consistency with public versus private streets and having private streets meet our guidelines, especially when it comes to street width. Maybe a little bit of variance, but I'm interested in seeing what the difference is, because it does seem extremely compact. And then lastly, do we have any, does the city have any liability, given that this is a private street, and any issues that there may be with ingress and egress, higher potential for parking problems?
No, naturally with all these developments, through our site plan review process, we have categories they all have to meet, and during that review, we'll see if they comply with everything, so parking, everything like that is reviewed. So if that's all good to go, that will be noted in the report from Carla Wardman, and Planning Commission will have the final say.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it, Mr. Green.
All right, thank you, Mr. Green, appreciate it. Oh, I'm sorry, one last question before we vote.
Thank you. So I just wanted to follow up on what Mr. Fordyce had said, and, you know, what really frightens me is he said, oh, this would be a nightmare of a street if it was a city street. And so that makes me very concerned that if it should arise that we need to take over this street, it's not built to our standards, and it would become very burdensome for the city. So I guess I would like to make sure that, you know, we're talking a good game of, well, we should do this, we should, but we're not making a policy, and so I guess I want to just better understand where we're going to cut that off.
Right. So it would be difficult to plow with our equipment, you know, so this would be like adding another, a very narrow cul-de-sac, this would be pickup trucks and some of our smaller equipment. We wouldn't be able to get our big trucks through there very effectively. This is very similar to Austin Commons, which is also a private street. Those were approved a little bit narrower. I can't remember if they have parking on only one side or no parking on the streets at all, and then dedicated guest parking pockets throughout the complex.
The ladder.
Yeah, so it's that same kind of situation. Also, the attached condos within Wildwood, those streets are a little bit narrower, and those are private, and it just allows for some options for the developer and a different kind of neighborhood feel. But the rest of the streets in the single-family portions of Wildwood, those are full-width city streets, parking both sides, you know, fully constructed to city standards. So that's, that I think is kind of the dividing line. Single-family developments, single-family homes, site condos, developed to single-family homes, those would be public streets, full-size public streets, parking both sides. Apartment complexes, attached condos, that's, those are places where you can start looking at private streets. And I think you also want to allow yourself the flexibility of looking at private streets if, you know, we wanted to explore a development like Cherry Hill Village. Did I get that name right?
Chery something?
Yeah, yeah. That neighborhood, very successful neighborhood, very narrow streets, you know, parking only on one side, many of those streets, you have to pause and let the one person go one way, and then you go the other way, but a very successful development, and, you know, a lot of people love it. So, you know, I don't think you'd want to just say all public, you want to allow yourself, and you also don't want to say all wide, because you might want to look at a development like Cherry Hill. But again, this is, you know, it's an accessway into an apartment complex. Somebody on council mentioned that it allows for addressing of those units, you know, rather than being yet another Maple address, you know? We can have, each can have their own address, rather than, you know, 200 Maple Number Five. So it's, it is, this is consistent with what we've done with private streets on similar-scale developments in the past, and I think it makes sense. And again, I'll say that the whole, having a discussion on an ongoing policy makes a lot of sense as well.
I appreciate your comments, thank you.
If there's nothing further on the motion, we will proceed to vote. Thank you, gentlemen. It's been properly moved by Girba, seconded by Kamira Sulak to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay.
Nay.
Ayes have it, and the motion carries five to two. We move on to new business item 21-146, Proposed Ordinance Number 830, Mobile Food Vending Ordinance Amendment. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the July 28, 2021 memo from Assistant City Manager Green, and to approve or not to approve Ordinance Number 830, an ordinance to add a parcel-specific mobile food vending permit to expedite mobile food vending applications on certain pre-approved properties, and to limit the number of trucks on parcel based on the availability of parking spots by adding subsections 22-62D, amending 22 through 64, and adding subsections 22-6612 to the mobile food vending of the City of Celine Code of Ordinances.
Move to acknowledge receipt.
Move to acknowledge receipt by Mr. Girba, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Dillon. Mr. Green, the floor is yours.
Thank you, sir. Back in March, the city was approached by a couple of local brick-and-mortar businesses that requested that we find a way to speed up our process for accepting mobile food trucks and their applications. One of the ways we came up with doing that is allowing the brick-and-mortar establishment themselves apply for a permit, and then streamline the actual mobile food vending permit, so that lowers the cost for mobile food vendors to come into the city and find a location to be. At the request of council, Code Review Task Force looked at this to codify this process moving forward, as we think it's going to be beneficial long-term. While reviewing the ordinance, Code Review Task Force also noticed we did not have any limits within the ordinance for how many mobile food trucks can be on a single parcel, and we wanted some control over that, so we don't have food truck rallies pop up throughout the city at random times. So after a couple of meetings of discussion, this is the ordinance we came up with. So first part allows brick-and-mortar establishments to get a permit for the year, and then the second part puts a limit on the number that can be in a certain parcel.
Very good. Councilmember Delorko is the liaison to the Code Review Task Force. Do you care to make any comments at this time?
Yeah, sure, simply that this has gone through several iterations at this point, and we basically took the recommendations and the concerns that council had as far as the number of trucks allowed within a given space, and took that back to Code Review and modified the language to reflect those concerns. So if there's any additional concerns at this point, I certainly would be happy to get any feedback that if it's not in a position to move forward tonight, then we can take that back to Code Review.
Very good. Questions for either Mr. Delorko or for Assistant City Manager Green? I'll start with Mayor Potem Girba.
Can you just share with us an example of limitation of food trucks on a property?
Yep, so the way we have it written in this draft ordinance would be, if you have a parking lot with 90 spaces, you are allowed two food trucks. If you are a parcel that has 110 spaces, say, you can have three. So the minimum you can have is two for the first 100 spaces, then every additional 100 you get, you get another truck.
So what's the minimum, so there isn't a minimum for one truck?
No.
Okay. And then when you mentioned the fees, one of my concerns, and it's been voiced to me by a number of restaurants too, is again, the competition with these as a result that they're not paying any?
They are paying fees.
They are paying fees.
They're just minimal now.
But they're very minimal. Have we reviewed those again against some of our other communities?
No, not now at this time. After you guys approved them back in March, we kept them throughout the year, and that'd be something we can approve absolutely now or next year, when the season kicks back up.
Will be normally done with the...
Yeah, normally it's done with the fee book process, but naturally with this, it's something we could do sooner, since these pop up before the fee books adopt, and by you guys normally in June.
That's just, we need to make it a little more competitive for our brick-and-mortars, because of the lifeblood of our city and paying the actual tax of food trucks. I know people may like them, but they aren't necessarily paying for the roads and the sewer and the water and everything else in their city, so at this point, that's it for me.
Very good. Additional questions? Mr. Kamira Sulak?
Yes, and Mr. Girba answered most of my questions, so the last question I have is, where did the 100 spaces number come from?
Yep, so the first one, we just need to find a way to justify it. Based on past practice from people that submit permits, they normally have at least two, and then we have been approached by some of our larger industries in town who want to do something for their employees, but we needed a way to justify limiting them. So the justification for Code Review is if you have more spaces, you could reasonably fit another truck without compromising parking anywhere. So the 100 number was pretty much the clean number that we felt could fit within a lot that doesn't cause a food truck rally type of look, which we were trying to avoid.
Okay, I understand that, I was just wondering if there's a formula to come to that, round 100 spaces?
Yeah, no specific formula, just something easy to count for us and for any parcel owner.
Okay, I don't have any problem with that, I was just wanting to get clarification. Thanks.
Additional questions? Ms. Dillon?
Thank you. So is there any delineation between a public event and a private event?
Just like all our ordinances, public events, you guys have the authority to approve and approve variations to our ordinance, so you guys, by approving public events, don't necessarily have to follow ordinances to the T.
Okay, I asked that wrong, I, my apologies. So if one of our large businesses wanted to bring in food trucks for an employee appreciation event, it's not open to people from the public, it's only on their property for their, are we, do we follow these same rules?
Yes, we follow these same rules, because they still have to go through the application process, so they are subject to these rules as well.
Okay, and I guess I had this question when this first came about, and I'm still very unclear. So we've now given this authority to brick-and-mortar, and are they surcharging these vendors?
That's up to them, that's between them and the food trucks they bring in.
Well, I guess, you know, I'm just trying to figure out how, like, we balance that, and trying to figure out, you know, is it in the best interest, is it, you know, that somebody's making a profit here on our generosity? And then my next question is, when you're calculating these 100 spaces, is it per business? Or is it per facility?
Per parcel. So if there's seven businesses in one building, it's whatever parking spaces are tied to that building.
So if you were in the Imagine Theater parking lot, and they have 400 parking spots, one of those businesses?
Nope, it's the first come, first serve, you're, that parcel's capped at five. So say Imagine wanted one, but then say someone else wanted one, they could come from two separate businesses.
Okay, but so I guess what I'm wondering is that Imagine doesn't own all of the spots in there? Or they don't have a right to all of them, but we're calculating it that they do?
Well, anyone for our application has to get permission from the property owner, so Imagine would have to get sign off from the property owner.
Okay. I appreciate you doing this. There has been some concern on the West Side about vendor-type issues that are happening in the One Plaza, and I think it's starting to sort of grow a bit, and I want to make sure that the city is keeping control of that situation. I guess I'm just not understanding why we don't just cap it ourselves, and not base it on parking spaces, and we say you're only allowed two, or we're only, I don't know what the difference is.
I think we were just trying to justify fairness for our large plazas, where, like you said, there could be 10 businesses within a plaza, but if one business decides to take both spots every single day, then that misses out on everyone else.
Okay. Okay.
Want to comment, Mr. Delorko?
I just think we discussed it on Code Review as a way of leveling the playing field and making it equitable for everyone.
Okay.
Any additional questions?
No, I'll stop there.
Mr. Girba, you have an additional question?
Yeah, just to, again, when will, does this at any point run against or in conflict with a site plan with these trucks?
I'd say no, that's kind of, the reason we suggest this cap, because this shouldn't affect parking standards. Naturally, when they submit, they submit a plan where they're going to be parked everything, so we always make sure they're not causing any access issues, especially specifically for emergency vehicles, but with these caps, I feel comfortable, nothing should impact site plans.
Okay, and then the other one being, do these trucks have to be self-contained, so that they aren't running electrical cords or any other hoses or stuff like that to these trucks? Have we ever considered that issue?
One of the reasons, no, because in my opinion, I'd rather have someone plugged into a high amp in a building versus running a generator, so I haven't looked specifically at that, that'd just be my personal preference.
I guess my only concern would be using extension cords, so we might want to look into that in terms of cord, in terms of electrical permits and so forth.
Yeah, I'd say if anyone does install electrical outlets on their outside of their building, they do, we, actually, they do pull permits, or we hope they do, if we catch them, double permit fee, but...
I'm just more worried of, of running a cord across a parking lot, or a hose or something of that nature, which could cause an issue, because then it makes it more permanent. Unfortunately, I have a feeling we're going to have to see these truck, food trucks set up as a permanent thing, even though we have permanent restaurants throughout the town, and so you've got a food truck that's paying a third of what you would expect to pay, or whatever, in a building, so, thank you.
Any additional questions? Ms. Dillon?
Thank you. Just for clarification, is there any length of time that these food trucks can stay?
No, off, as long as they fit within this ordinance, so say a lot is subject to two only, if there's only two in that lot, they can stay.
And they can stay continuously?
Yeah, I'll have to double-check other parts of our ordinances, for example, if one's just a trailer, that may be subject to different rules versus a full-blown food truck, that's a vehicle.
Because I do have great concern about them being parked, because then they're basically becoming like a brick-and-mortar that's not paying. You know, there's, mobile is its own word, and, you know, when they become stationary, I really take concern about that, and I'd like to see us have better guidance, that they're only allowed to be there, you know, sort of the way our sign ordinance is, you know, it's two days a week for eight hours a day, or whatever, or a maximum per month, per year, whatever it is, because, I mean, there is one that has been in perpetuity for very, very many months, which I'm not really sure that that's fair to brick-and-mortars.
Gotcha, yeah, we'll take a look at it.
Any additional questions? Okay, we have a motion on the floor moved by Girba, seconded by Dillon to acknowledge receipt, is there, that's been, has been properly moved and seconded, excuse me, so we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. Is there a subsequent motion out to approve or not to approve?
Move to approve.
Moved by Girba to approve, is there a second? Seconded by Seal. Is there any additional discussion on the motion? Mr. Girba?
Although this doesn't achieve everything, I would hope, in terms of making sure that they're paying their fair share, it does help limit some of the expansion that could happen by creating a giant food court in one of our larger parking lots, so I appreciate the work the Code Force has done on this and the recommendations, so, thank you.
Very good. Any additional discussion? Ms. Dillon?
Thank you. Do we know what is our biggest parking lot within the city? Would it be the Farisha Lot?
Yep.
Yeah, by far.
And it would be how many spaces?
Oh, I'd have to go look.
Yes.
Okay.
If there's nothing further, then we'll proceed to vote. It's been properly moved by Girba, seconded by Seal to approve. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mike. We move on to new business item 21-148, Responsible Contractor Policy. This will be motion to approve or not to approve the responsible contracting policy as submitted.
Move to acknowledge?
Okay, moved by Dillon to acknowledge and seconded by Girba. Mr. Green, do you want to begin?
Yeah, I guess I'll kick off. So this is something Code Review has looked at over the past few months, suggested by the mayor and I believe a couple of other members of council. The responsible contracting policy would be something that the city can use to ensure contractors for our projects hold up to their end. contractors for our projects hold up to their end. So it essentially just establishes additional guidelines they will have to submit and meet in order to qualify for our projects over $100,000. So it's pretty much just additional information they need to submit during the RFP process that will be reviewed. So one of the big goals for this is to no longer take just the lowest bidder when reviewing RFPs. This is more qualifications-based. If the company is good, then we'll more likely take them.
Very good. Ms. O'Toole, can I call on you? Because this was an issue that you and I discussed early in your tenure. You reviewed the similar policies that I think exist in the city of Ann Arbor, maybe Oakland County, and one that was tentative in Jackson. Do you want to provide some additional insights on why you see value in moving forward with this policy?
Certainly. To echo Assistant City Manager Green's comments, really, this is an opportunity for us to start selecting contractors and making awards based on the best fit for the project. So the qualification standards that we've identified have been filtered down to what we feel and what the Code Review Task Force feels really reflects the priorities and goals of our selection process and adds a little bit of weight to our administrative review internally before we come to council with an administrative... A final recommendation for bid awards. So for me, this is really establishing a standard of excellence for the type of contractors that we select to work with and adds a layer of security to the city's future investments that we won't be dealing with unscrupulous actors.
Very good. Mr. Delorko, you've invested a lot of time in this issue as our liaison to the Code Review Task Force. And I know that your colleagues on the Code Review Task Force spent many months evaluating this policy. Is there anything you'd like to add at this time?
Yes, I think Ms. O'Toole stated it very beautifully. This is a process that we can use to streamline the relationships that we have with the people we choose to do business with, and it effectively raises the bar. It holds them to a higher standard. We've crafted a bid evaluation criteria that weights different aspects of the bid, so we're not just focused on the lowest... The monetary value of the bid. The contracts provide adequate... It ensures that the contractors will provide adequate wages and benefits to their employees and utilize fair business practices. That's something that's near and dear to my heart as we would consider bringing this ordinance into the city. It plates a high emphasis on training, so there's less a likelihood that accidents will occur and that we'll need to potentially enter into litigation or expensive repercussions there. I think that this will have a positive impact on the community overall as we raise the bar and the threshold for the contractors that we enter into agreements with.
Very good. That was stated perfectly, Mr. Delorko. I couldn't say it... Couldn't have said it better myself. I do want to acknowledge Robert George, who's in the audience, who represents the labors. And I actually think on this issue, you're also speaking on behalf of the Washtenaw County Skilled Building Trades and the Huron Valley Central Labor Federation. Is that correct?
That is correct, Mr. Mayor.
Very good. And if you'd like to add something for our discussion and then hang tight, because there might be some questions best... They can be best addressed by you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, council members and city manager, Assistant City Manager. My name is Robert George. I'm a resident of the city of Ann Arbor. I am a member of Labor's Local 499, which represents Washtenaw County as well as several other counties in southeastern Michigan. I'm also a delegate to the Huron Valley Area Labor Federation and representing the Washtenaw County Skilled Building Trades, as the mayor mentioned. During my day job, I work with cities across the state on policies such as this to make sure that the contracting processes are fair, are equitable, and that the city is getting the best bang for their buck. And this is a type of policy that would be able to achieve all of those goals in a number of different ways. I know a number of the speakers have already touched on a number of the good aspects of it, including ensuring a higher level of training, asking about whether a contractor has past issues with the city or in the broader region. As we've seen in the city of Ann Arbor, there was a low bid contract that was let prior to the city's responsible contracting policy, and that contractor's had three environmental spills into the Huron River in the last several months. So that... This is the type of policy that would prevent that type of issue from coming to the forefront because it would require those contractors to disclose those types of incidents to city staff, who would then be able to gauge whether that contractor should progress in the bidding process. Additionally, it takes into important things, like what percentage of local labor is being sourced on a local project. I think that's a huge aspect for any municipality, that you're spending the taxpayers' dollars with taxpayers in the city to help stimulate the local economy. There are a lot of other broader aspects of the policy, but overall, this is a good policy both for the city, for labor, and for business, because it sets a fair and level playing field that's transparent for all possible bidders for city contracts. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Very good. And just for the public record, I strongly support the policy. I'll be voting in favor of it. As was mentioned by my colleagues, this responsible contracting initiative puts a strong emphasis on ensuring that vendors treat their employees fairly, that they put a strong emphasis on training, and will prevent the city from working with unscrupulous contractors and vendors in the future, which evidently is, I think, a key priority of the constituents, the residents of Saline. So with that, I will open it up for questions, unless, Mr. Delorko, anything else you'd like to add at this time?
At this time.
Okay. Questions for either the city manager, Assistant City Manager, our guest, Mr. George, or our council liaison to the Code Review Task Force? Councilmember Dillon, go ahead.
Thank you. I think I will start with city manager. You might be able to answer all of my questions. Is this document used currently in this forum in other jurisdictions?
I do believe that there are some... Some communities have adopted it as an ordinance, and some communities have looked at it as a policy. We elected, and it was the direction of the Code Review Task Force, to adopt it as a policy because it was a bit more nimble to implement and possibly change, since this is a new way of doing business for us.
Okay. So did we use this? Is this a template from another community?
Yes. With some fairly significant changes, but yes, a baseline template.
Okay. And so then my next would be, has our legal counsel reviewed this?
Yes.
And it sort of passes?
It passed the test.
Okay. So I have two other quick questions. One is, does it specifically address our NDO? Is that a part of it? In there... So like, it talks about... There are things about assurance that it... That the bidder is an equal opportunity employer and does not discriminate based on sex, but does that... We don't reference our own NDO in here.
So the next step in this process after adopting the policy is that I actually draft the questionnaire. And in reference to your comment, that then would be one of our questionnaire questions is, you know, can you... Do you currently or can you comply with this policy of the city of Saline? And the scoring metric would then reflect whether they do or don't.
Okay. And so the scoring is at your discretion?
Well, there's weighted criteria.
Okay.
The questionnaire will reflect what questions need to be answered in each category.
Okay. Because, you know, is there... Is there instances where certain contractors wouldn't quite qualify under some of those so they would have a lower score? I just... I'm just trying to figure out how that sort of balances out across the board.
Yeah. And that's why we have the weighting criteria that we do.
Right.
Because you do give a bit more priority to certain standards above others. And that's also why we set the $100,000 threshold, because we didn't want to completely exclude small bidders from the process or startup contractors or things of that nature who might not be able to meet certain training thresholds just yet growing businesses.
Okay. And there's nothing in here that's privacy issues, like, because there's a fitness-of-duty program, there's a couple of other things. I just want to make sure that we're not overstepping the bounds.
Yeah, we're not asking them to share their personnel records with us. We're just asking them to certify, you know, via the questionnaire and the statements that they provide, the accuracy of their involvement in certain programming or certain standards.
Okay. And then my last question is, just on the last page of the document, is an ordinance that talks about false information being provided. Where does that... That ties back to the information they are providing us?
Correct.
Is correct?
So this is at the recommendation of Attorney Forshee, who wants to make sure that we have some teeth to, if they lie to us, basically. If they misrepresent their answers on the questionnaire.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Additional questions? Mr. Girbot?
So at what point do we adopt that ordinance? If not part of this policy?
Yes, I believe that ordinance will then need to come at our next meeting because this... The current motion does not include the ordinance adoption.
My understanding would be we have it as enumerated action item on the 16th.
Yeah.
The only other question I had, you know, as a result of this, will this allow us in terms of being able to more expedite any issues that should arise with some of these contractors, where in the past we've had to drag out many discussions when we run into difficulties?
Well, the idea here is that we filter out those type of contractors before we get into that situation. But certainly by then adopting the ordinance, if it's discovered that they misrepresented something, now they've actually violated a local code of ordinance.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? Mr. Kamira Sulek?
Actually, just a quick comment. I appreciate that this is best practices and fully support fair labor, and I'm glad that this has come forward, and I appreciate all the efforts that have gone into it, and I will be wholeheartedly supporting this. Thank you.
There are no additional questions. There is a motion on the floor to simply acknowledge receipt. It's been moved by Dillon, seconded by Girbot. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. I say having the motion carries unanimously. How about a motion now to approve or not to approve the responsible contracting policy as submitted?
Motion to acknowledge and approve?
Moved by Delorko. You can actually just simply move to approve, Mr. Delorko, Councilmember Delorko, if you're comfortable with that?
Yep.
Okay? And seconded by Mayor Pro Tim Girbot. Is there any additional discussion on the motion? There appears to be none. Then we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of approving the policy as submitted, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. I say having the motion is approved unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen. Robert, appreciate your time and advocacy. We move on to new business item 21-149, Code Review Task Force Directive. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the July 27, 2021 memo from Mayor Marl and to approve or not to approve the directive that the Saline Code Review Task Force and... Excuse me. Let me reread the motion. To acknowledge receipt of the July 27, 2021 memo from Mayor Marl and to approve or not to approve a directive that the Saline Code Review Task Force review and make recommendations on the process of transitioning the Code Review Task Force, Cemetery Task Force, and DEI Task Force to city committees.
Move to acknowledge and approve.
Second.
Moved by CEO, seconded by Kamira Sulek to acknowledge and to approve. I really can't expand upon the memo that was submitted dated July the 27th. As it indicated, I believe, two weeks ago, Councilmember Delorko, who serves as liaison to the Code Review Task Force, and I met with City Attorney Forshee to discuss this matter, it was Attorney Forshee's directive that we petitioned city council to empower Code Review Task Force to begin this work. This motion and the memo were written very carefully as to not tie the Code Review Task Force's hands or make it... Or make it a requirement that they draft the necessary policies and ordinances to transition these groups into city committees, although I think that's what they'll ultimately do. It's simply to empower them to begin the evaluation and research and then hopefully make a recommendation to us later this calendar year. Mr. Delorko, did I do a decent enough job summarizing our meeting? Is there anything you'd like to add?
Absolutely. You stated it beautifully, and the memo speaks for itself. I think this is moving the right direction that gives the Code Review Task Force and the DEI a permanent foothold in the city, which is definitely needed.
Very good. Happy to address any questions you may have. Mr. Girbot?
Not so much a question, but a statement. We know as a community, we do, and as a government, that we do evolve as we look at different types of commissions and so forth. My only one concern is, you know, the Cemetery Task Force and the Cemetery Board of Appeals, although it exists, whether it needs to be a full commission or any of that type of situation, I'm not so much at this point thinking it needs to be, because in reality, the cemetery will be full probably in the next few years, and the concerns that face it doesn't necessarily need to have a full-blown budget and everything for that. So at this point, I'm just voicing the board to a thorough review of that concern, because we don't necessarily want to add more administration and issues and costs if we can... Thank you.
And certainly, that could be... Those groups could be dissolved, and the authority could be returned to council. And perhaps that's the best way to administer some operational responsibilities, but that would be a determination that would need to be made by the Code Review Task Force. Mr. Kamira Sulek?
Thank you. I feel this is a necessary improvement in our efficiencies and appreciate all the work that has gone into it with the Code Review Task Force. And I can't wait for this to... For the process and for... Especially for the DEI Task Force to become a permanent city committee.
Very good.
Thank you.
And Councilmember Dillon?
Thank you. The city manager and I had a discussion about this several months ago, because I think it's very confusing to the public, the delineation between committees, commissions, and task force. And so I think I would appreciate if we could just bring that forward first and just explain what those differences, the roles of those, so that the public understands what we're doing. And so maybe that could be a first step of showing, you know, why we have... We are calling some still a committee and some then a commission, and then we will still have task force.
Right.
But these won't be a part of it. Just so people understand that they are actually different things, and they're not just titles.
Sure.
And so I think that would be...
Yep.
That'd be helpful.
That's perfect sense.
Any additional comments? There may be a motion on the floor moved by CEO, seconded by Kamira Sulek to approve or to acknowledge and to approve. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. I say having the motion carries unanimously. And the last action item of the evening is 21-150, Police Department Request for Additional Officer. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the July 26, 2021 memo from Police Chief Hart and to approve or not to approve the request to add an additional officer with the associated cost to be included in the first 2021 budget amendments. I'll move to acknowledge and to approve.
I will second.
Very good. Chief Hart, the floor is yours.
Pretty straightforward request. We find ourselves in a very unique position right now to have two very qualified candidates for the position of police officer. We're currently authorized to have 15 sworn staff members, and I'm asking to go up to 16 based on these two excellent candidates. One has been a police officer since the first of the year, and the other one has four years of experience at another police agency. I feel that they're both viable candidates. I reviewed their background investigation by Detective Stanford and did not find any reasons in there to be concerned about, you know, what they have done in the past and their potential to be great Saline police officers.
One of the individuals, chief, is substantially through the process. When do you expect... Assuming the motion is approved this evening, when could both individuals be onboarded as full-time employees?
Presuming they both need to give at least two weeks' advance notice to their employers, they could be onboarded in early September.
Very good. And it would be our understanding that we'd be a little top-heavy and then not replace the next officer who retires or leaves?
That is correct.
Very good. Thank you, chief. Thank you, chief. I think this is an excellent opportunity, and I'll be voting in favor of the motion, obviously, the mover of the motion. Are there questions or comments for the chief? None? Ms. Dylan?
I just wanted to say thank you. You know, succession planning has just sort of been my battle cry for a long time, and I really appreciate your proactive approach to it, especially in this situation of identifying two candidates and moving forward.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate the support of City Manager O'Toole, who wants to revisit our succession plan and really have a concrete, really kind of a plan for one of our strategic planning goals. So it's very important to do that.
Any additional comments or questions? Mr. Comer Sulek.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to echo Ms. Dylan's comments on, on succession planning, and I think it's a role model for the rest of our departments to, to do, to do the same as we look, as we look towards solidifying a strong and bringing, bringing the youth up. And your memo is very, very clear and concise, so I, I love that as well. Thank you. Thank you.
If there's nothing further for the chief, we'll proceed to vote. It's been properly moved by Marl, seconded by Kraus, to acknowledge and to approve. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. As have it, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you, chief. We move on to the discussion portion of our agenda. First up is Commission, Committee, or Task Force reports from council. Anybody have any? Councilmember Dylan.
Thank you. I'll just start with the Parks Commission and just remind the public that we are still accepting Green Thelma Award nominations. That goes through the end of August. Gardens are in full bloom. Please acknowledge your own or your neighbors.
Very good. Councilmember Kraus, did you have a board, or Committee, Commissioner, or Task Force report?
Just a quick one. The healthcare task force is still moving along with our focus groups. I would love it if everyone would share on their pages or whatever social media presence they have, and I'll continue to work with local media to capture the focus groups, what the residents are wanting, saying. We did have Senator Irwin in our last meeting, and between his advice and our Commissioner Shannon Beaman's, we're going to partner with some of the work that's already being done, and so we'll have even more robust information when we're ready to present. It's going really well.
Good. Good, good. Mr. Gearball?
Planning Commission met and approved the PUD extension for the Grand Sacra development that will occur on Layer Farms on Maple Road. I believe that'll be coming to council for their review and approval for the extension. And then we also, we discussed that Chelsea Lumber wants to be expanding and changing their storage area in the back of their property, but unfortunately, there is a, not unfortunately, but there's a residential property that is surrounded by their property, and there are concerns with providing that individual the rights to more privacy, not necessarily looking like they're in an industrial area. So that discussion went back and forth and was postponed to be readdressed once we're hoping that solution can be done with the landscaping and the fencing surrounding that property to provide that resident with a livable community area. So that's it for planning.
And I would suspect that the Bridgewater Lumber site plan will be approved at our next meeting, which should be a week from this coming Wednesday, and to confirm, Mr. Green, we would also have the proposal from Livonia Builders for the, their Maple Road development on that agenda as well.
Maple Road development, sure. Hope for Chelsea.
Okay. Well, it's, I think the motion was that it was postponed until that date, so at a minimum, they would have to take action to postpone it again. Additional Committee, Commissioner, or Task Force reports. Mr. Comer Sulek.
Yes, I just have three. So first, the Arts and Culture Committee is working on DEI initiatives that promote arts and culture with youth and collaborating with Ypsilanti for a poetry workshop. So that, that is exciting. That has occurred in the past and has been a big hit. Next, for the Celine Youth Council, I'd like to give a call out for members, grades eighth through twelfth. Anybody interested, please contact myself or Carla Scruggs. And we continue to meet through the summer, which is not the norm, but just to keep the connectivity going is really proved helpful for the students, especially as they get closer to going back to class. And then for the DEI Task Force, as most of you know, we hosted two very successful implicit bias training sessions and actually co-hosted by Stillwater Counseling, so a big shout out to them, and we will be looking at additional trainings in the, in the future. The Pride picnic on Sunday, the twenty-fifth, was, was also outstanding, well-attended. People had a lot of fun. And then lastly, the community cookbooks are in. They're, they're available for sale. There's a lot of good recipes. Most of my, most if not all of my council colleagues have at least one recipe in here, and including many staff members like our city manager and Chief Hart. Hope I'm not letting anybody out, but this is really great. There's a lot of different cultural and just different meals and a lot of desserts, so we have them. Come and get them, contact the, myself or the DEI Task Force Facebook page or website. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. If there are no, Mr. Seal, you have a Commission, Committee, or Task Force report?
A week ago Sunday, the chief hosted an open house in the police department, and as part of that open house, the Strategic Planning Task Force was present and soliciting community input on the strategic plan, moving forward the four key items in the strategic plan. And I think it was fairly successful. We were competing with good weather for people's attention. I got to say the chief did a remarkable job in hosting a wonderful open house here for the police department, which has been several years in, in the making. In other words, we haven't had one for several years, and I appreciate that. It was a very good way to, to show the police department is, is a true community asset. So we get some valuable community input from the strategic planning process, and we're in the process, I think, of getting close to completing that.
Very good. If there are no additional Committee, Commissioner, or Task Force reports, how about reports or other announcements? Mr. Gearball?
I just want to invite everyone to the yard sale. That'll be occurring the same weekend as Summer Fest, August thirteenth and fourteenth, out to the Renshler Farm. We've got a salvage barn full of donations and actually even spilling into the other big barns, so it's our biggest fundraiser, and we hope that everyone would be able to attend. Thank you.
Very good. Any other reports or announcements? Easy enough. And then our last item is downtown traffic island. I think that was mine. I don't know that DPW director is here. Do you want to postpone that to our next meeting?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So Clerk Royal had asked that the, it's actually, I mean, I guess technically it is a downtown traffic island. I think we're talking about the traffic island adjacent to the cemetery and Mills Road about landscaping and placement of vegetation that could survive without an irrigation system. So if you could make that an enumerated discussion item at our next regular meeting on the sixteenth, that would be great.
Will do.
Very good.
We did clean that out.
Okay. And now we come to the, I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor, I have one, one quick thing.
Please.
And actually, it's for you. I didn't hear whether you voted yea or nay for the social, downtown social district.
I voted no.
No. All right. Thank you.
We come to the second public comment period. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time to make comment or question to city council. This public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. Are there any citizen comments in council chambers this evening? The record will reflect there are none. Clerk Royal, did we receive any written comments in advance of tonight's meeting or during tonight's meeting?
No, sir.
Okay. Then is there any other business to come before Celine City Council this evening? Please note our upcoming meetings, including a very tentative August fifth council, special council meeting, which we'll probably discuss later this evening. At this time, the chair would entertain a motion to go into closed session to consider legal opinions of the city attorney dated August the second, twenty-twenty-one, regarding the Huntington Wood sidewalk, July twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-one, regarding the, regarding two oh seven Monroe Street, and July thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one, regarding initiation of legislation, and we will reconvene into regular session at the conclusion of the closed session. Moved by Gearball to convene into closed session. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by CO. The clerk will please call the roll.
Councilmember Comer Sulek? Councilmember CO?
Yes.
Councilmember Del Orco?
Yes.
Councilmember Dylan?
Yes.
Councilmember Gearball?
Yes.
Councilmember Kraus?
Yes.
Mayor Marl?
Yes. We are convening to close session at eight thirty-five PM.
Everybody. Chair would entertain a motion to reconvene into regular session at 10:02 PM. Moved by Dillon, seconded again by Seal. The Clerk will please call the roll.
House Member Carron?
Yes.
House Member Gill?
Yes.
House Member Dillon?
Yes.
House Member Gierba?
Yes.
House Mayor Morrow?
Yes. We are convened into regular session at 10:02 PM. Is there any other business to be brought before City Council this evening? Then the Chair would be happy to entertain a motion to adjourn the regular meeting at 10:03 PM. Moved by Gierba. Is there a second? Seconded by, was that Delarco? Thank you, sir. All those in favor of adjourning say aye. Opposed say nay. Ayes have it. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.